Nobody makes mistakes around here. There's no track.
By Zhou. By Zhou.
There, but we have a lot of good work to do in here. I'd like to welcome you to the monthly work session of October 17th. And we would like to call up Natalie Roca. Sorry Natalie. I know, I saw you moving.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
School board members. Chair Ms. Zucker and Superintendent Bowden. We, first on your agenda today is the Sunco School of Innovative Studies School Improvement Plan. As you recall, we had a workshop and then right after the storm, we had the board meeting. And you asked the school to spend more time to polish up their plan and come back to you today. So they have done that and they're here with their leadership team and some board members to discuss their plan. I wanted just to let you know that, as you know, the school improvement plan that we use with the state is an online platform. And it is somewhat cumbersome, so when you see the PDF, it's somewhat difficult to follow. And that's why the school prepared a one-page summary of their goals. And also attached to the document are the data sheets because they're uploaded and you don't see them. So they attached them. So they've dealt, did, did the best they could with the format of the state's school improvement plan. So with that, I will turn it over to the school.
Thank you. Hi.
Well, good morning.
You're on. Red light there, then you're on.
Red light is on. Here we go. First of all, to Sarasota County Board, good morning to you. And we're very pleased to be here for your work session this morning. If you will allow me, please to introduce some people that we have with us today.
Please.
First, we have our governing board members. That's Mr. Brian Yost. Our board president, Larry Robbins. And Mr. Pete Anderson. And we're very happy to have our counselor at the elementary campus, Ms. Friedel, who's with us today. The people that are sitting before you is Mr. Much, who is our Dean of Students, Academics. Dr. Shariki Evans, who is our data person. And to my right, Ms. Rita Coons, who's pupil support. And Ms. Melinde, pupil support. And of course, for those who don't know me, I'm Stephen Evans, a very proud director of SSIS. Before we get started this morning, I would like to just preference what Natalie Roca had said about our school improvement plan. In our last meetings, we were unaware that you guys did not have online access to see some of the data. There were some things that was definitely missing that we just found out that you guys were not privy to in those first couple of meetings. And I also want to say to the county, thank you for your support teams who have met with our team. I believe this is our third meeting. And I think that through those meetings, we've always thought that we had a pretty decent school improvement plan. But what came from those sessions is that some clarifications as to what you as a governing board was looking for. So at this last meeting that took place with our team members and Natalie Roca, we have a better feeling of what the county is looking for. So we hope that these things that you, that we review today is applicable to what you're looking for. So how do you want to get this started?
Who would like to start?
I just have a few questions. Thank you for coming out here. And I'm glad that you've worked with us and that this has evolved. And thank you, Dr. Roca.
Yes.
And Katrina for the many, many hours I know you guys have put in. So I really appreciate that. We're all in it together.
Yes.
It's charter schools, public schools, district schools, we're all in this together. So I really thank you for making this evolve. My first question is, is if you're able to achieve these goals, what letter grade would you end up being?
An A.
So you have a performance plan that's going to go from a D to an A in one year?
We are always looking for an A.
So, but I want you to succeed.
Yes.
I want you to be an A.
Yes.
My only concern is, is are you, are these goals achievable within one year? Because what I would hate for you to find out is half way through the year, your staff gets, you know, demoralized because they realize that they can't, they can't achieve these goals. And so I just want to know, is this achievable? Can you become an A within one year?
If you take a look at the percentile scores, if you've taken a look at that by content area, subject area, percentiles, wilds. These numbers are, we feel, very doable.
I'm gonna take it at your word. And I look forward to seeing you as an A school next year.
You got it.
So thank you.
Very good.
Charlie.
We know that, you know, you had a large percentage of your students below grade level at the end of the school year. I would assume you've checked them again at the beginning of the school year to look at what the loss was over the summer.
Oh, yes.
And where they're at now.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you mind sharing that with us?
I wouldn't mind. Good morning, everyone. We had a summer enrichment program this summer as well. So I looked at the data based off of the students that attended our summer enrichment program. And they were able to increase or maintain, most of them increased. There was one that maintained their score from the second diagnostic, which we used from iReady to put them into the program as the invitation, based off of the first diagnostic that they took. So I tried to compare that group of students to the students that didn't come. And the kids that did come to the program did have a few points higher that were able to increase. But the kids that came back from the summer, they, for the most part, they went up. But we did have a subgroup that did go down. So that's the group that we're targeting for the remediation and tutoring that's gonna be starting this week.
Now, it's the students that went through the summer remediation that improved. You didn't have kids that improved on their own over the summer.
We had, we had some kids that improved. The kids that were in the green, the higher scoring kids did come back. For example, they would have improved maybe from between three and 10 points on their own if they were in the green. If they were in the yellow or the red, no, they didn't have that type of improvement. They either stayed the same or they went down a little bit. So that gave me the data kind of break out for our remediation groups and our tutoring groups.
Which grades attend the summer enrichment program? And what is the percentage of those students that scored below average ended up attending?
I'm sorry, Ms. Roca.
Which grades attend the summer enrichment program?
We have kindergarten through eighth grade invited. The majority of the kids that come are from kindergarten to third grade. So we only had a few kids from middle school. So my biggest sample size came from their second to third grade group.
And what's the percentage of the students that were not at grade level were in attendance? Or how many students were in attendance?
We had 25, about 25 students as your average attendance. We invited over 60 students to come.
And that was targeted for those who were underperforming?
Yes, ma'am.
So little less than half of those underperforming were attending?
Yes, ma'am. We are still trying to figure out a way to encourage more families to take advantage of it.
Have you notified those parents, the scores of the students that were underperforming?
For the diagnostic one?
Well, I, alright, how do you inform or get along with the parents when the students are underperforming? How do you reach out to the parents?
Through the teacher parent conferences that we just had. We had a conference night from five to seven. And we have the student, the parent letter that's shared with the, with the parents during that night from iReady.
So that was, so the ones who were underperformed on last year's FCAT, or whatever it is now, were informed last week at the?
No, ma'am.
No.
I thought you was referring to the doc, to the iReady diagnostic. That's just a part of the procedure to talk with the parents at the parent teacher conference. For the kids that scored, did not score well on FSA, those letters went out this summer.
Yes.
Okay, so you did send letters to the parents though, because that wasn't?
Yes, ma'am.
They didn't know that at the last meeting. So you sent the letters. How many of those parents respond or show up at these parent conferences? Because I know just asking them, not all students will, not all parents show up at the parent conferences. What is your percentage, especially on these students?
Please allow me to inject here. Seems like, and you probably know this best, being in this for many years. It seems like the parents that you really need to see the most, those are the ones that are the most difficult to sometime have conferences with. We probably say of those students that did not do well on the FSA, we probably got about a good 50% of those guys who would respond to us on a continuous basis. And they're assisting us right now in the preparation for this year. And I want to go back and clarify some information that you would also share. One thing that I wanted, Dr. Evans, to take a look at this year, and this was important information from us, for us, is that we wanted to take a look at those students that were in a particular classroom last year. And we had three areas, without being too specific here, that we wanted to focus our attention on. Because the prior year, those students had performed pretty well for us. And that, that's what led to us getting hit academically. And this is something that I did not clarify in our first meeting that our board president had shared with us. At SSIS, we have two rotations at each grade level on our elementary campus. Two teachers kindergarten, two teachers, two, blosse, blosse. Three rotations at our middle school. So looking percentiles while, and this is significant to the scheme of things. If we have one teacher and the classroom teacher is pivotal. And once they get into those classrooms, you have to be teachers that are committed to making sure they're covering those standards each and every week with fidelity as they're supposed to. But any building level principal can tell you, there's sometimes that doesn't happen. They go in there and they'll sail their own ships for whatever reason. And with this particular class at SSIS, if we have one teacher, and we discussed this all the time, that we all have to perform every single day. Because if one teacher lets us down, that's 50% of our population. That could be devastating to our scores. So we took a look at one of those classroom teachers that had not performed to the expectations that we had planned for. And based on the iReady data, the student should have performed better. So we took a direct look at those, and I thank you, Evans, for the data on that. Because I wanted to see how those students performed at the beginning of this school year. And we're very pleased to see that those students are at grade level or above. So they came in with the skills this year. We have to make sure that those classroom teachers are performing with fidelity and making sure those covering those, those standards the way they need to be covered. Which is partly and wholly my responsibility. Anything that goes wrong, there is my responsibility. So we're very, very pleased to say that the initial iReady data shows that we're in a pretty good situation this year. That's why we feel that these standards were achievable.
What corrective action did you take when you noticed there was a couple of classes that had, the year before they were on level and then they fell off?
As we have always done, we provide good professional development, good follow-up classroom monitoring. But for this, whatever reason, this score did not take place. And we make no excuses about it. They did not perform well for us.
Your fourth, it seems to me your fourth grade, I mean, really took a nosedrive.
They took a hit. And the prior year, if you look at it, those kids scored pretty well.
They did. And that's what, that's what concerned me, because they were doing well.
Yes.
And fourth grade, they just, they just fell.
Yes.
Even some of your fifth grades, they fell.
If I would show you the individual class data from those two classes, you could see significantly what we did to prepare our teachers. One classroom performed some of the highest in the area, in the district. And one classroom killed us.
Is that teacher still teaching there?
I don't even think so.
Yeah, the fifth.
We made a big change in that. And that we also had the same issue in our middle school, and we made changes.
Yes.
You could see, if we could give you individual classroom data, you'll see significant changes.
Since we're on iReady, I looked at last year's scores for the breakout versus this year's scores for the breakout. And our scores are almost identical. And we had about 68%, 69% of our kids in the green, which is the level that you want them on for iReady.
Yes.
By the time we got to the end, I'll say diagnostic three, and there wasn't that much change between diagnostic two as well. We had went down, all the way down to 25% in one area, 15% in another area. So one of the biggest focuses for us this year has been about keeping the rigor. And, you know, having that data in front of those teachers to show, we had it. You have, this is what the kids came in with. We have got to differentiate to make sure that we stretch and grow the kids that can stretch and grow. And we give systematic support to the students who cannot. So we are kind of really went in there to focus on, what are 60%, 60% of your kids who can move? So right now, our teachers are looking at differentiating in that way, to make sure that we don't leave out the kids who can perform or who can move. Because they're putting all their attention on the kids who are struggling. It is a difference on the campus with how they're, how they're teaching. I'm really pleased at how they responded to that.
That's a challenge.
It's an ongoing challenge.
And still, still continue to grow your high performance.
Yes, ma'am. Which is why I do weekly data chats on the middle school campus and weekly data chats on the elementary school campus. It gives me an opportunity to check in with the teachers. We can problem solve through some things and I can go in and model and help. I've been able to do all these amazing things from providing posted notes as a, as a classroom disciplinary procedure to actually showing them how to have three groups rotating at the same time. And the teachers are just responding so well to what's going on. Meeting weekly has been pivotal to keeping them, holding them accountable. Accountability is the name of the game. We cannot have another year where we have one teacher to perform and another teacher doesn't.
No, not the two teachers.
Yeah, and I shared that data with, I shared that data with everybody. For them to see that, they, they saw what it can do. So we have a phrase on SSIS campus, candid collaboration. It has to happen. You have to be okay with calling out your colleague and saying, you gotta do these things. We cannot be in this situation again. So I'm really pleased with how our teachers are responding to that challenge.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you. And a lot of those were, a lot of those items were picked on, but I want to kind of follow up on them. So, you know, one of the questions I had was, as I look through this and where we are today, you know, half, not quite halfway through the year, but it's moving along fast. How, and I'll use the measure of attendance, I think that one's pretty, quite straightforward. So how are you guys doing there as a starting point?
Oh, I'm so glad that you asked it today. So glad you asked.
I didn't plan that with him beforehand either.
Well, one of the things that we have done, and just to speak very honestly. Some of the students that have come to our program, they're familiar with Sarasota County. In that they, unfortunately, they, they're very transient. Anytime that their attendance fall off and you put pressure, they move to a new school. They move to a new school. If you check some of these little guys, several of them, several of them have transferred several schools. And to be very frank, to stay out of the light of social services or other community venues that are tracking the, the parents, and it's flat out neglect. And there's limited to what not only SSIS can do, but any school can do. But we're very happy to say that we have gotten our social worker much more involved, which one of the things that we talked about in that first meeting. And we know too, that there are some students and families that goes outside of the services that we're able to provide. And we've gone back to some of those practices that we had in the initial year, communicating those needs with some of the district schools who have stepped up to assist us and taking those students, returning them to the district school for more assistance. But our numbers this year, in this first few months of school, October, are the number of students that are at risk for attendance is 50% less than what we had last year. I contribute that to our counselors, who have been red alerted that this is where we want to focus our attention. So Ms. Friedel, I do want to recognize you that. And Mr. Much, our middle school dean of students, who are doing a really good job of tracking those attendance and making those current contacts and getting those guys into school. So we've already reduced that number by 50%.
So you're on track to what your, your goals were on that area?
Yes.
And my next question was kind of tailing off what you'd said before, some of the more, so the students that are in the most need and their parents from an engagement standpoint can also be the most challenging, which is where social workers can certainly be assistant significant. And so, so just for clarification, because in the form it says you have, you will hire. So you have hired a, a social worker that is engaging?
This was a person over the last couple of years that we've had contracted services for. We believe that through our UNICEF grant that we have applied for, which is for a position for a social worker, allowing us to be able to use those funds, and we believe that it will be approved, will allow for the social worker that we currently have on a contract to be much more intensive. We don't want to have to send those guys back to the district school. We want to be able to do our part and make that more intensive to hopefully create a change for those families.
Okay, so right now it's contracted, but you're looking from, from the grant funds to make a permanent, okay? And, you know, one of the, more from a macro level, and it's good to hear that you were able to drill into this classroom level as to potentially where some of the major risk areas were and who, you know, how to lift that person up. But also if that wasn't achievable, removing them from the situation. Because obviously that's impactful for the students. But also, and Dr. Evans, you spoke to this, but, you know, my concern was when, having that collaborative effort together versus feeling micromanaged. I think that lots of teachers want to be inspired to teach and be excited to go to school, but not feel like, I mean, the pressure's definitely on, there's no question there. But, so I wanted to get a sense of what that culture is. You kind of touched it already, so you feel that that?
Well, we haven't spent much time together, but I have a very magnetic personality.
Back in time.
But I don't know, I don't know if it's Mississippi charm, whatever it is. But I am able to kind of build that collaborative feel. They don't feel like I'm, I'm not over them. I'm a teacher just like they are. I just have a different role. And I'm really good at uplifting. I really believe in the growth mindset. And I use it with our students, but I also use it with our teachers. I use the term problem solver a lot. I use the term being okay with making mistakes to learn from it, being a risk taker. So the same way I would do in my classroom and create an environment where it's okay to make a mistake and learn from it, we're gonna figure this thing out together. That's what I do with our staff. Being able to meet with them once a week gives me that opportunity. And it's not always comfortable. It's not always comfortable to hold someone accountable. But they know that, they know that already, I already told them, we're gonna have some times where you're, you're probably not gonna like me very much. You know, let's all take a moment, or let's eat this chicken that I made last night because I thought you wasn't gonna like me very much today. But we're all in it together. They do so, they do such a great job with just trusting me to go on. Okay, let's go ahead and do this. And they trust in my experience and they trust in what I'm saying because I've based everything off of research. It's not Sharika telling you that we need to differentiate. I'm gonna show you based off of the numbers and what we can do. And here's why I say that, if you do not agree, please tell me so that we can work together. But it is that collaborative effort. So they don't feel micromanaged. Most of the teachers respond back to me and say they feel inspired. They feel heard, they feel supported. And they know that I have the skill set to back up whatever it is I'm asking them to do. So if they need me to come in and teach a fifth grade classroom or a kindergarten classroom, I can do that. And then we can go on from there.
Well, and that's important, just because when you look through this, I think ultimately, they are, they're, they're significant goals, but they're, they're absolutely what you need to be striving for. But in that, to be successful, it really comes down to the culture and the buy-in. So that's one of my biggest concerns. And just making sure you guys are continuously checking, tracking, as Eric Robinson here likes to say, is how are we doing? So making sure that you can answer that question every single day is really what, so you're not surprised at the end of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
And we want to celebrate.
And I would like to just add to that, Shariki Evans was a perfect fit to the already existing staff of SSIS. And we want to make sure that when we brought, well, that's any teacher to SSIS, that their personalities are going to fit well with the staff members of SSIS. I would probably tell parents coming in here that the very nature of our program is therapeutic. It's a place that feels good. It's a place to feel good. Students are encouraged and empowered each day, as well as the, the staff members. It's a good place to be. It's a good place to be.
Todd?
It's not hard. It's not hard.
I have a question for you, and it seems a little bit odd, but in your courses, do you issue letter grades, A, B, C, D?
Oh, yes.
F, okay. The reason I ask is, one of the charts here, the early warning indicators, it's on page eight, lists the number of students who failed English or math. And I know some people are doing non-graded stuff. So I didn't know if that was a direct omission, that there were not any students receiving failing grades in language arts and math?
Well, I think that it is. And when you go back to some of the, again, I don't want to call any names. But when you have instructors that are, I'm just gonna say, yes, it is.
All right, so if I look at page eight, we've talked about attendance, we've talked a little bit about out-of-school suspension. Course failure in English, languages, arts, or math is always a good early warning indicator. And so that line is all zero, which implies either it was looked over or nobody got a failing grade in, in English or math. And the reason I bring it up is Friday was the end of the first grading period. And I wanted to question if you had a system in place to visit those course grades at the end of the nine weeks to say, how are we doing? So if we've got kids getting Ds and Fs in English, that we can act now as opposed to waiting until the end of the year? So is that just an omission there?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And so then my question is, what system do you have in place now that we've reached the end of the first grading period?
The same that we, as we've always had. Now, we go back to our little special needs providers, our care team people, those first of all. For those little guys who may be identified, tier one, tier two people, I'm sure you guys are familiar with those terms. The ones who may be eligible for services. And that may be. and that may be for placement for special needs or support services. And then, within that group also, you have students who have already been identified for services. And so, of course, those guys receive modified instruction, modified grades. From that, we sit down with our classroom teachers through our little POCs and part of the discussion to identify those little struggling learners, and then we put things in place to see what we do, need to do to further support. As Evan said earlier, that little 60%, 60%, 70% is our whole listed groups, but now you're talking about what services are we gonna provide for that little 25%, 30% that you're really struggling with? So, those are things that we're still working with right now. Of course, our main focus again, and please do not take this out of text, is that 70%. But we're also now looking at how we can provide further services for those little guys identifying.
And I would suggest that in a very deliberate way is that you collect data at the end of the first nine weeks on students getting Ds and Fs in English, language arts, and mathematics. And when you have your data chats with teachers, talk specifically, and sometimes you just gotta call them by name and say, how's little Johnny doing? I see he's got an F in English. Then the other thing is, if you collect that data throughout the year, you can compare it to state assessment. I'd be very concerned if a kid got an A all four nine weeks and then wasn't proficient at the end of the year, you'd wonder if your in-class assessment matched what was happening. And so, that's a data element I just want to make sure wasn't overlooked.
Yes.
If I may, one of the things that we, just for, as an example, so what you see with the ELA in math, we have used it down here at the bottom, Apex Course Recovery. We're proactive in our approach, so if we see a student is struggling, then we get that information through our grade level, subject level PLC meetings, where we identify the students of concern. For example, this nine weeks, we have a number of sixth grade students, a subgroup who's having a problem with two-digit, three-digit division and multiplication. So, we can already see there that that's gonna cause a problem, that's a barrier to their success. So, once we can bring them up and scaffold to allow them to do the two-digit, three-digit, they're gonna have a much higher likelihood of success, you know, for the rest of the nine weeks. So, that's an area we've already identified, that that's why they might have some struggling Ds and F grades right now. But we firmly believe, once we provide that, you know, initial kind of pick-me-up in those identified areas from the data, then I think that's gonna help us down the path.
And another significant number with that, and this again is just saying it just like it is, as we look at our number of students that have come over, and this is something that we are aware at our middle school, and we're making plans for, we have made plans for, and we're looking at other practices to follow support. Coming from our elementary campus of, and I'm gonna use the number 10, if we have 10 students in our fifth grade, in our sixth grade class, 30% of those students are coming from our elementary class. That means that 70% of those guys coming to our sixth grade are from outside of SSIS. Those little guys most likely have come to us with deficiencies. Those are the ones that we have, and we continuously monitor it, because it continuously changes. Some's come proficient. This year, we've got a little group who've come with some very low abilities in some of those areas that's prerequisites to what we need to accomplish for those sixth grade standards. So, we've already put in systems already to try to get those masteries of those basic skills. That's what Mr. Munch is talking about. And of course, for those seventh and eighth grade people, because of the standard set by Florida of the success, you know, move on to the next grade level. Again, for those little guys who look like they're failing, these are F, who are not gonna be accomplished, we skip those guys into Apex right now. Now, they have the classroom instruction and the online tutorial. So, that program has worked pretty well for us.
And we also don't just look at one data set. We'll get the, so for example, as you alluded to, so if a student has a 95 in language arts, but then on their I-Rate, their Level 1 FSA, and their I-Rate level says they're a kindergarten, clearly, that's an individual we're gonna have a data chat with, bring the parents involved, and make sure we figure out what's going on. Is this a student that's really a 95% in an A-rated student that doesn't try on I-Rate and FSA? Maybe they need test-taking strategies. Maybe they have, maybe there's other areas outside of their control that are leading to them not being good test-takers. So, those are just some examples, some things that we do. We don't just look at one data set, we look at multiple areas and try to figure out, individualize what the concern is, because it's not a broad, you can't paint it with a broad brush, as you well know.
Could you speak to me about your attendance rates? Because their attendance, it really gets bad with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Yes, yes.
What are you doing to improve that? Do you, does your social worker go out to the parents and talk to the parents?
Oh, yes, yes.
And do you have reports that tell you why those students are not coming to school?
Wow, yes, ma'am. And again, you guys have been in this business for a while, and you know that here in Sarasota, we have some parents, some families that are really going through some unbelievable ordeals, unbelievable. And again, those, some of those families that we're able to help, and again, we're very thankful for the district schools who have additional services, that when we call them, they support us as we support them. So, the situation, as we said, has been reduced by 50% from what we were looking at last year.
So, and so I will no longer see 29 students of seventh grade?
Oh, no. No, I think that with that number, Mr. Munch can speak to that best, our number of students, we are, on page eight, we're now looking at the current number of that little list that I just got from you and Ms. Taylor, of the number of students now that we're looking at for attendance concerns.
Yeah, we actually have been very fortunate this year. We go through, it's just, I can speak individually from the middle school level. We have a weekly meeting, myself and our school counselor, to look at specific students of concern and what their reasoning is for missing. Again, you can't paint it with a broad brush, you have to individualize, figure out why is, what is going on. So, many of our students, the social worker has been very beneficial, been able to go into the home to figure out what's going on. Additional outside services have been provided for many of these students. You also may have students with, you know, medical concerns as well. So, what I can tell you is that, I mean, some of these students are no longer with our program, especially with our eighth grade students have moved on. And so, I think that, again, not to, you know, try to point a finger at any one thing, but a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that happened last year, it seemed like, you know, we were trying to get the social workers involved, get the parents involved, it just seemed like we didn't have enough support for some of our students. But this year, we feel like we have a much better grasp on being able to provide support for those students that we can help, and for those students who it is outside of our control, we allow, we try to set them up with a situation that's gonna be more beneficial for them.
Even your third grade is high.
It used to be.
Crucial.
It used to be.
What was on this report?
Yes, it used to be.
It was 18 students.
Which is almost a class population.
Yes, that's what I'm...
Yes, yes.
I think too, trying to, you know, trying to combat this attendance problem, we are really trying to look at outside-of-the-box measures. For example, our PTO attending that meeting, and trying to figure out, work with our parents to see, how can we bring more parents in? With our population of students, a lot of our parents have a fear of the school, or they have had a bad experience with the school. There are so many barriers to keeping them from coming to the school that we're trying to figure out. That's not the PTO's mission. We want to try to make sure we bring parents in and try to get around those barriers, but so many have been shown to me so far this year, things that I never thought of would be a barrier for school, but we are trying to look at it in a holistic way.
Do you do outside services? I mean, do you contract for outside services? Because I'm thinking of where I work part-time, and I'm not selling them, just that I know that they have services that they would provide, and that's Jewish family and children's...
Oh, we love those people. We love them.
I'm familiar with JFCs as well.
We love them.
We've been working with them as well, for, even as an example, we've brought them out to some of our parent nights as well, for the Healthy Families Program.
Yes, because they have grants, they're working on grants, which doesn't cost you anything.
And we have received some of those grants, and one of the most significant grants that we really love is they provide those parent, those parent classes.
Yes.
And we have those, we offer a different topic every month for our elementary and middle school campuses, based on what the parents would like to see. And we'd also like to land to back to the attendance piece, and of course, those were district numbers from last year, and again, those numbers for this year significantly, Laura.
All right, I look forward to seeing that. Bridget?
Mine was a very quick follow-up, just to the point of the resources, since, I mean, we have, we are resource-rich in Sarasota.
Oh, yes.
It comes to our foundations and such, and I know that there is a commitment to help students, especially in those dire circumstances, so making sure that you are tapped into them, and if you need any guidance as to, if you have more than you expect, or one organization can handle, or it's not the right fit, please let us know, because there are plenty...
And that's one of the things that we look at, that we, you know, we kind of look at everybody collaborating together, the family, the school, and the community working together to help the students that specifically that are in need. And that's why, again, we have a multitude, you know, Ms. Friedel or Ms. Taylor, our school counselors can attest to the fact that we, we use the resources, it's just one of those things that we want to make sure that we're providing the right resources with the right families, and the families are then taking advantage of those resources we are providing, which unfortunately, sometimes, you know, all three pieces don't always work together, fortunately.
Two quick questions, both of them dealing with the budget. I was trying to see, and I think we'd had some of the budget before, what budgetary changes have you made since you received this D grade, and how have you shifted resources this year to address the issue?
One of the things that we, again, and we're very thankful, again, for the UNICEF grant coming in, we are hiring, once approved, and we feel pretty good about it. We have five teacher support people that are coming in, five positions. One of those positions, again, is the social worker. We want to make that full-time to be, we pull our share of those little guys who have not only attendance concerns, but little family concerns. We have also provided four in-class support teachers, identifying, working specifically with that 30 percentile.
Now, is this if you get the grant, or you've already received the grant and you're doing?
We have already started to change our positions now. We hope the grant will further support those, but we've already started that movement right now.
And one other thing that I noticed was that, that your school has some of the highest per-square-foot lease rates in the county for our charter schools. I brought that up, and then I saw that in the budget, there was an additional 500 in lease payments. I don't know if that was monthly or if that was annually.
I'm gonna ask our governing board president.
It looks like he's got an answer for me.
Yes, we do. And while he's coming up, Larry, have you guys had a chance to come out to see the campuses of Sunco School for Innovative Studies?
Sure.
Yeah. Well, if you haven't had a chance to see our campuses, and we are, we're really blessed, there's not too many charter schools that has the green space that we have available on our campuses. We have full-functioning gymnasiums on our campus, and we know that there's many charter schools that don't have that. Also, the outside space, full-functioning football, soccer fields, it's a pretty nice-looking space, but I'm gonna let our president speak further on that.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, am I on?
No.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, because we're always interested in ways to improve our budget. The data, someone got me the information, and this may be what you're looking at, the information that you and I were both looking at on this sheet is inaccurate.
Inaccurate, did you say?
Inaccurate.
Okay, so good, I'd like the accurate information.
Right. Our, this sheet that was, I don't know who put this together, shows that we have a total of 18,586 square feet between the two campuses. That's half of what we actually have. We have 35,050 square feet. And so, the math, working that, incorrect information into the, our monthly lease fees...
Yeah, if you were double the lease fees, but we had only half of the square footage, that would account for it.
So, our rent, our square foot, our cost per square foot is 41 cents, so actually, we have the lowest rate if this, if this information is accurate on the other schools.
Right. And what, you know, apparently, when I was talking, when we were looking at a new charter school, that they were, they were able to break it down, you know, so much per student, and apparently, that's probably a better way of looking at it even.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And, you know, and I think maybe we could direct our staff to get that number, so that, I think that would be a better comparison. And then, maybe there would be an asterisk that you could say, yes, we have, we pay 500, 600, 700, whatever it is, per student in our lease payment. And then, you can asterisk, but, you know, we also have, pay taxes, or we have these large fields, or something like that. I would, that would probably be better, more informational.
That would definitely be very helpful, and we'd love to have it. It would help us at the time of our lease negotiations, I think it was in three years. We just can't arbitrarily...
Right.
...change the lease midterm. A lot of it depends on the market conditions for rental space, too.
Right.
There's a lot of variables that come into play, but any data that we can obtain to help our, our school, we more than appreciate having. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Mr. Superintendent, could we ask the staff to check those numbers on the square footage and those dollars, and then also that, figure out what it is dollars per student on the leases?
Sure. And did that originate with our staff?
It appears so. It's not...
Dr. Rook is nodding yes, so, okay. Yep, we'll be happy to work on that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the dollars per student, it probably gives a better idea of where you're at, and apparently, that support organization, you know, that's how they were looking at it.
Sure, and we'd have to do that on both a projected enrollment, is that they anticipate 500 students, but they may be working towards that number, so we could do projected enrollment, so if they were projecting 500 students but had 400, it's easy to divide it by both 500 and 400 and show you projected and actual.
That would be great, thank you. And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate your explanations and your dedication to this population of students that you have. I know that that can be difficult, but that's what you signed up for.
That's what I signed up for. That's what I signed up for.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, yes, we do the hard stuff. We want to do that.
Did you ever think of combining the campuses? I know you had them combined at one time.
Mr. President?
Yes, we always, as a board, we're always looking at that as a possibility. We did not specifically separate the two schools on purpose, it was because of what, go back to the rent situation.
Yeah, I remember.
Right, the buildings were available.
Yes. Wow, you remember that?
If we had a clear slate, and if we had unlimited resources, we probably would combine it. It would be, have some efficiencies by combining. There's also some rationale to keep it separate, to keep smaller school-campus control. I think there's an appeal to, to students and parents that they want to be, have their children served by a smaller, smaller school versus a bigger school. So, if we combined everything, both campuses on one, one campus, we would lose that. So, there's pros and cons, and we constantly, as a board, are analyzing that.
I just, I just worked that out, because you have 35,005, 50 square feet, so that's a lot.
Yes, it is.
Thank you again.
We thank you.
And I would love to come out and see your campus, if ever invited, you would get a very favorable response, so let's see if we...
We invite you today. Amen, we invite you today. All of you really come out.
Get our calendars together, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to say one thing, I forgot to thank Alicia Melendi and Rita Kuntz. We spent quite a few hours in that back conference room, working on this, yes.
Thank you so much, Natalie. Thank you so much. We always gonna hug you before I leave.
I keep asking him not to do that. Now, it's on the record. And also, yeah, the school was very receptive to our guidance and recommendations, and they did change some things and added a lot of professional development, because it is our job to help teachers succeed, so that they did make some favorable changes. And in terms of the document that you got, that was a very informal, and that was on our part, because this is not our area of expertise, and every lease covers different things, some cover utilities, some don't, and that's why I put at the bottom, this And that's why I put the bottom, this is self-reported from the schools, and perhaps we may have made a typo on that specific school, but this is self-reported by the principals, as you can see from my footnotes. But I am going to ask for assistance from facilities and from Mitzi Corbin's office to make sure we interpret. That's one area I really don't want to learn too much about. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, I apologize for that. So, next on the agenda, we have Sarasota Military Academy. As you recall, the board approved their request to combine both schools, both campuses, into one charter school. And the board expressed concerns about perhaps not being, not able to see really student performance when they were combined. And the school, the board asked the school to come back today with, actually, it was before the hurricane, but everything got delayed, to come back to share with you their goals and their proposed academic changes moving forward. Okay?
Good morning. You look so official.
Easy to spot in the crowd.
Yes, exactly. That's what our cadets thought this morning, too, when we showed up at the bus stop here. So, good morning, and thank you very much for working together, inviting us back to the work session to discuss our school grade action plan. But before we begin, I would like to introduce myself once again. I am Christina Bowman. I'm the Executive Director of Schools for Sarasota Military Academy. To my left is Lieutenant General Howard Crowell, who has been, in years past, the Chairman of the Sarasota Military Academy Board of Directors. He is now Chairman Emeritus, but he is also now Chairman of the SMA Foundation, that has been newly formed. Directly to my left is Mr. Herb Jones. He is currently the SMA Chairman of the Board of Directors. To my right is Dr. Robin Livingston. She is Head of School at the High School Campus. To her right is Tom Vera, who's Head of School at the Prep Campus, our middle-school campus. And directly to his right is Major Becky Morris, who is the Assistant Head of School on the Prep Campus. Also joining us is Mr. Steve Herb, who is the Vice Chair of our Board, and Mr. Steve Koch, who is the Director of Finance and Business Manager for the Academy. You, I believe, received, and your Rita had, we were asked to prepare a school-grade action plan, not as in-depth as a school improvement plan. That is a document that each Head of School is currently working together on a collaborative effort to create that school improvement plan for the One Academy 0074 Cost Center. I'll entertain questions at this time.
Eric.
I didn't see anybody else. I'm trying to be polite and let the ladies go first, but they're not putting their hands up, so.
No. Well, I'm letting you go, as you can see.
Thank you, ma'am. Colonel, I was just curious, in the very front, you have, on page three, you have broken down by all those different sections. That's just for SMA Prep? You don't have that similar graph, although you have components of it later on, but you don't have one that's in-depth for the high school?
That is correct. What, what the high school did, this was a collaborative effort, is they broke their three areas down, well, actually, their four areas down, to specifically address for this school-grade action plan.
Okay. And obviously, the, the place where the need is the greatest is where, the need is the greatest, is the bottom quartile, and so, that's where you're going to be focusing your efforts?
Actually, several, several areas, yes, sir.
And mathematics, obviously.
Definitely in mathematics, absolutely. Plan is already in place. As SSIS alluded to, looking at that Apex Program, Course Recovery Program, but also, prior to that, identifying those students who starting to, their grades are starting to decrease, and putting those skills in place, those supports in place, prior to even getting to that D or F in the classroom.
And so, if you're able to execute on your plan and reach the goal, what would be the grade?
Sir, according to the goals-
I'm an E3 CB. There's no Colonel should, O6 should not call an E3 a sir.
It's just who I am, sir.
So, just want to make sure we understand that. I'm a BU builder, so.
Yes, sir. According to the goals-
Although you're in the Army, so yes, sir is fine.
Thank you. According to the goals that have been established, the reality of the goals that have been established, it is a strong B. Of course, we are striving for an A, but also, looking at those goals, the reality of it is a 59, and it's a good, strong B. We want to come out as an A. If we are a B this year, then we will be an A the following year, putting additional supports and resources, what's working, reviewing what's working, what do we need to revise.
I was shocked that, of the weakness in math. I would have thought of Military Academy, the weakness would have been in English Language Arts, because it seems like in the military, you're much more lucky to use math skills than you do the other skills. And so, I was just wondering, do you, do you spend a lot of time incorporating military exercises into the classrooms? Because I know STEM and math is, is something would heavily lend itself to military precision, you know, trigonometry. I mean, it seems like there'd be in math all over the place.
There's more cross-curricular planning at Prep. Our high school campus does work together, but within the JROTC LET program, when you're looking at LET 1, LET 2, LET 3, LET 4, they do integrate a lot of the mathematics, a lot of the reading, the literacy, into those classrooms. But also, in the 11th grade, they teach life skills, and they're looking at budgeting and things like that, and working with math skills, those everyday math skills.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Could you, could you explain something for me? It says, "Improvements of the school grade is currently locked into test outcomes, which do not provide indications of the full scope of successful teaching and learning." What does that mean?
Are you alluding to in the SMA Prep?
Yes.
Looking at the whole child, and making sure that we're providing supports for the whole child. And so, if that's looking at, we added an additional counselor at Prep to provide some additional pupil supports, to make sure that if, if they're having some social issues with their classmates or at home, they have someone that they can go to, they can work with that individual, and then they're better able to prepare in the classroom and focus, and focus on their testing.
So, what this means is that you're using behavioral modification to help with your grade?
Very much so. As a matter of fact, I'm very happy with what they're doing at Prep right now, is that we don't have an in-school suspension room. We have a positive behavior support skills room. And in that room, we have an individual that I believe will be hired today, that the whole program is revamped, and they're looking at the whole child, and how can they revise their behaviors? How can they develop those skills and habits to take back into the classroom and be successful? Would you like any, add to that?
Sure.
On page five, on your sixth-grade advanced math and seventh-grade advanced math, you're saying you want to go from 65 to 85. Is that a number of students, or is that percent?
I'm going to ask Major Morris to-
It's on the middle-school acceleration page.
Yes, that's the number of students.
Yeah, because I was saying, to go from 65 to 88% was like, whoa.
Well, we've noticed, I was sorry to interrupt, what we've noticed is that we've been getting 100% passing rate in our Algebra I and Geometry, but our score is very low. It's very simple. We don't have enough cadets in those particular classes. So, we looked at that very closely. We revamped, we have, we added another sixth-grade advanced math class this year, and we can start funneling that through, so as they start to get into seventh and eighth grade, they are more prepared for the higher-level maths, and start infusing more of our level, or FSA 3, 4s, and 5s into that high-level math classes.
Wasn't there an additional algebra class as well, added this year?
That was also added this year as well, yes.
Based on reviewing their scores coming into this school year.
Were you able to identify anything in particular that was causing the backslide on learning gains? I mean, where you only, you had a negative 15% of learning gains and the lowest 25%? And, and in learning gains overall was minus 11% in math?
Yes, I think that we did not identify them early enough and get them into Apex last year. I think with iReady. We purchased iReady. The faculty and staff at Prep had asked us for that. They felt very confident to use that.
So, iReady is new from last?
Last year, it was new. This year, we've had additional professional development, so our faculty and staff understand how to delve into that data, pull that data up, and have those chats with the students, and also, set goals for themselves and for the students, looking at the data.
And I also see you, you work with Khan Academy. How often does that happen? Is that a regular tool in the classroom now?
It, it's a resource for the classroom, but I'll allude to Major Morris specifically, but it's a resource available.
We actually used it as part of our summer program this year, just to give students an opportunity to just be able to work on mastery of their skills, even skills from their previous years. So, like, our incoming sixth graders actually worked on the fifth-grade mission, which was surprisingly difficult for them, many of them said. So, it's just to help fill in some of those gaps that, you know, would typically happen over the course of the summer, or may have not been there to begin with, because we're getting them from a variety of entry schools. And what we're finding is that there are a lot of gaps, so really focusing in on being able to fill, support them in mastering those skills before they come into sixth grade, so they're ready to hit the ground running in sixth grade.
Great. So, so who attends your summer learning academies?
It, it's done on their own, so.
It's done on their own.
So, it's not, it's not 100%.
But you reach out to the incoming sixth graders?
It's for all of our students. So, seventh grade would be working on their sixth-grade mission, eighth grade would work on their seventh, and then, our incoming algebra would actually focus on pre-algebra skills.
This directed to Mr. or Dr. Bowden. Do we encourage a summer learning for our incoming sixth graders?
In specific programs at the school level, there are activities that they're assigned throughout the summer. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add to that, though, is very refreshing over the summer to see updates about the students and how many were making progress. And with the students' permission, that was sent out to the parents, to let them know that they're attending and they're doing a great job. And so, that's that positive behavior support as well.
You know, as a final thought from me, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see you want to get that B again, and, and I, and I hope that the following year, you'll be an A again, because we're counting on you. We need you. We, we need all schools to perform well. And, you know, we would like 100% of our schools to be A schools, you know, the traditional and, and all of our charters. So, you know, we want to do what we can to help you succeed, and, and if, you know, you're missing anything, let us know.
Thank you very much, and we want to be a part of that. We want to support that goal.
Richard.
Thank you. I know the, the culture around SMA is, is rich, and, and it's very deep beyond just the academic standpoint, and I know that's incredibly valuable, and, but obviously, we have to focus on the academics. And math being the one area that I think that everyone has made it clear is a, is a big issue. So, stemming off of some of the conversations that we had previously with SSIS, is have you been able to get to the granular level of the student and doing, monitoring them, seeing what the significant issues are? Is it on the instructional side, or is it the individual student? And can you kind of talk to me about some of those processes?
We're actually looking at a variety of areas. Of course, we're using the data from iReady to be able to drill down and look at specific areas that, where there may be some weaknesses. We actually found a group of about 44 students who were performing two grade levels below where they were, who were, who we were able to identify, who weren't currently receiving some type of intensive math support. So, that was, that's been very helpful in terms of looking at the individual classrooms. We have a new teacher, so of course, we're providing additional supports for that teacher. We're also looking at the effects of mindset on the students being able to complete homework, assignments, and, and things like that. So, we're, we're doing some action research to be able to help see how that relates to being able to, of course, do the work that's going to support the learning. So, you know, hopefully, with that, and being able to have all the teachers onboard with that, we're going to be able to, you know, use that to our advantage.
And, I mean, and I'm assuming, so in the, we talk about early warning indicators, and that kind of falls right within that, and I think it sounds like iReady is also being a, a tool of that, so that, that was my question. I certainly want to see you guys succeed. I, I know many families who absolutely love your school, and I know this community does as well, so we want you to be successful, as she said, and we have, whatever we can do to work together to, to see that occur. So, thank you.
Todd.
I have a couple of questions just related to the merger of the two schools under a single-cost center. Have you done a school-grade simulation of what your grade would have looked like last year and the year before, if it was a combination school as opposed to two separate entities?
No, but I can certainly do that. I did that moving forward with the 11 components, moving forward, setting those goals, so I can certainly do that.
Certainly something, as we receive grades, and next summer, what are we going to compare it to? And so, at least having done the simulation for the most recent year, there were some cost savings in regards to merging the two campuses. Ballpark, what was the cost savings of going to a single-cost center?
Well, actually, because we just completed the audit for the 2016-17 school year, there weren't significant savings yet. We have been told that there will be at least $25,000 to $30,000 savings, just in the audit alone, because that will, that will save, and leaving, even leading up to that audit, because one-cost center. We went ahead, though, because of that, and knowing that, we put additional supports into the classrooms. We added a school counselor on our Prep Campus. We added, we added an OT, Occupational Therapist. We added an ESOL position. Unfortunately, we've not been able to fill that position yet. It's a very difficult position to fill. We're working on that, reaching out, our HR directors, reaching out in many, many directions for that. But additional intensive reading teacher at the high school as well, the additional algebra class at the Prep Campus as well. So, we're putting those supports in place. One area that we're really focusing on, and we, we hear this from our faculty and staff, is technology. And technology is a difficult piece. It's very expensive, but we think it's very important. We're asking our teachers to progress monitor and analyze that data, and they're having a difficult time with that because we, of technology. So, our plan, moving forward, after November, presenting this to our Board of Directors, is to place five laptop carts, three at Prep Campus, and two at the high school. That'll bring us to three at the high school and four at Prep Campus, so we can get those kids better progress monitoring, and our teachers quicker information regarding the data that's available to them, so they can make those adjustments in the classroom. We're also looking at, in the future, working with our foundation, is looking at a one-to-one for our cadets. We'd like to hand an iPad or Chromebook to our cadets as they enter into the academy, and research is showing that they're making progress, being able to utilize their own piece of technology, their own device.
And I know you won't say it, so I'll say it for you, but by returning civics to your prep school curriculum, had you had civics in your equation last year, that campus would have been a B.
No doubt.
And so, we're anxious to see civics returned to your curriculum. Mr. Robinson commented about a, a military culture. Well, civics is obviously embedded in a military culture. Matter of fact, it was your highest-performing indicator as a middle school.
Yes, sir.
So, I bet you're as excited as I am about returning that to your assessment program.
And that particular instructor is as well. He's very competitive.
I just wanted to give you some cadews. You have increased focus on school culture and team building. You have three academy employees participating in the 2017-18 Sarasota County School District Educational Leadership Co., congratulations. And your mentoring partnership with Join Our Youth and the Church of the Palms. And the last one is your parent-teacher cadet council. All things that will accelerate your, your learning of your students, and I didn't want that to go unnoticed, because that's very good.
Thank you.
This is Goodwin. I don't know, some of this may already have been covered. The civics thing, of course, was a big thing for me, because I was the one that had the red flags that, "Oh, why are we eliminating civics?" last year, and I was afraid it would affect all of our middle schools, and I think it did affect a number of them. And so, that's a good thing to bring that back. And we all believe that civics is an important part of growing up and learning things. I, I think you've got some aggressive numbers to, to climb, but I do believe that, knowing SMA, that you have the ability of doing this. I'm particularly happy to see that you're involved in visible learning, and I think there are many things in visible learning that I've been learning that will help you to really collaborate with your, with your instructors and with your staff. Have you had much of a turnover with teachers at either?
We, we did. This year, we did have a significant turnover. We had several of the teachers that went to school at the districted schools, and, you know, we wish, we want our teachers to do what's best for them, professionally and personally. And so, we have hired, we had a significant hire. We have the skip mentors in place for those hires, whether they're a first-year teacher or new to the academy. We feel that that's very, very important. It's stressful when you're new to the academy, trying to put your uniform on and make sure it's right. But in that classroom, making sure that they have those resources that are available to them, and supports around them, that are available to them.
We know that teacher credibility and relationship kind of intersect, and those are really important dynamics. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to look with, with great anticipation at some things that you all might do, and sometimes, we can chat about, I, I'd really like to come and visit the school. I haven't done that in a while, but I, I really hope that, you know, everybody will be assessment-ready. That's a really important thing, is to be assessment-ready and have a year of progress in a year, and we don't always do that. But I think that you've, you've got some things in place and a good plan in place, so you really need to, to drill down now and make sure that all of these things happen. And it's aggressive, but I think it will work, so I've got great confidence in you.
Thank you very much, and as- Thank you very much. And as we looked at, let me go back to that culture piece. Dr. Livingston had a great idea with the new faculty and staff that were hired on the high school campus. They participated in an escape room, one of the days of the opening day of the workshop week. And I was not able to attend, but it was very, very well-received. And it was very competitive across the team. So we would like to integrate that every year and try to integrate that across the academy as well. They really enjoyed that. And both campuses, they're working very hard on that school culture with the cadets and with the employees as well. That's very, very important. And we're talking about the assessment piece and being assessment-ready. That's going to be very helpful on the high school campus, that we've gone back to that traditional four-by-four block schedule. That's going to allow us to immediately assess. We get those scores back in a timely manner. We can look at that, how are we making progress? What are we doing well? What do we need to go back and revise? And have that reflective piece and put those pieces in place for our teachers and for our cadets.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you are welcome to the campus, and we look forward to seeing Dr. Bowden early in the morning at the high school campus at formation, followed by the Prep formation. And thank you all once again.
I know. I used to do this.
So saving up the money, we're taking the money from the CPA.
Yes, there you go.
Taking the food off the CPA.
More teachers, less CPAs. That's our motto. The world needs more teachers.
I do want to say one thing about SMA. They did a nice job summarizing this. Obviously, their school improvement plan is much more detailed. And what they're discussing here has been implemented since day one. And we are very pleased to see that the savings that they have from streamlining and combining have been put back into teacher support and hiring additional teacher staff, because we all know the teacher is the most impactful effect on student achievement. So, excuse me? Next to the CPA and accountant, the teacher is the most influential. Thank you very much.
I like the format that they did.
Can I also give them a compliment? It was a pleasure to have both of their principals this month at our principal planning. So we were delighted. We dug into district grade and talked about visible learning, Jane. So they are, they became quite good partners with us. We're looking forward to learning from them and collaborating and having our administrators work with them.
Great.
Thank you. And we'll invite Booker High up. Booker High first. Booker High, you're up. And I will just tell you, what we're doing now, at your request, is sharing three schools with you. These schools did receive a C in the district grade, but I will tell you, in school grades, but I will tell you that, like Dr. Bowden always says, we put our very best people in our most challenging situations. And so we're delighted to have Dr. Shelley and her team. And I'm going to sit here only because I'm the timekeeper. And I've told them all, they have twenty minutes. And these, if you know the three leaders that will be coming up here, they love their school, they're passionate about their school. And I'm just going to point to my watch when they have a two-minute warning.
Thank you. I don't have to do it.
Did you arrange PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yep, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Here we go.
Press your mics a little bit. There you go.
I guess I'll time-keep from here.
You're going to-
Okay, excellent.
Thank you. Good morning, school board members and also our superintendent. We are so excited to be here. It is indeed a pleasure and an honor to be here to present Booker High School's School Improvement Plan. I am here this morning with Assistant Principal Dr. Breslin. She is our Assistant Principal, who's in charge of curriculum and instruction. And on my floor, actually, Jermaine Ziegler, he is a student here at Booker High School, and I'll explain why he is here in just a moment. And then we have one of our teachers who happened to be our Teacher of the Year, also our VPA Coordinator. And for today, she is a member of our Professional Development Program. She's a member of that team. And that is Mrs. Rebecca Abrahamson. Now, we're going to go ahead and move that slide, please. Click. Everyone knows Booker High School's vision. Our vision is to graduate our students college or career-ready and become productive members of our society. And we are very, very, very proud of that. I'm sorry, I'll tell you when to click. Not yet. Sorry. We, the reason why I share that is because it's important that we talk about, we are very proud of our efforts that we have made as relates to closing the achievement gap by way of graduation. But we have so much work to do when we're looking at our overall school grade. When I think about the vision, I can't help but think about, and I just recently read a report in 2020 Georgetown University stating that it is absolutely paramount, that all of our students are graduating with a post-secondary plan to ensure their future. Because unfortunately, it's going to be very few jobs available for them. It's equally important to make sure they are finished with a post-secondary plan. And that has been our focus for the last three years. And we've had a laser focus, and we've seen amazing results from that. But unfortunately, we need to take a step back and make sure that we're drilling down on our overall student achievement as relates to what's happening in the classroom every single day with our students moving towards that ultimate goal. Click, please. I want to talk about the importance of not only having that as a goal for post-secondary, but how our kids are actually doing as relates to college preparedness. Not sure if you are aware, but for the class of 2017, we had more than $4.2 million earned by our students for post-secondary education. And we are excited about that, because we have a program that's very targeted as relates to our fast-for-completion, as relates to the areas that we're looking at by way of our ACT and SAT preparatory services. And just recently, we was recognized in the nation as having a very good program for college and career readiness, and that was done by College for Every Student. We are a school of distinction, the only high school in the state of Florida, but that's on the college and career readiness side. We have a lot of work to do on the academic side in those areas that's really looking at our school grade. Please click. We know about our VPA program. We know that we have a VPA program that's in the top one hundred in the nation. We have five major disciplines, and it's going very, very well. But when I think about our VPA program, I think about our ACE program, and I think about what we've done here in the district in the last four years. We have five major comprehensive high schools, and all of us have a rigorous academic program. So our students are graduating not only with a regular high school diploma, but also with a rigorous diploma. One of them is Booker High School. This year, we have five hundred and sixty-seven seniors, I'm sorry, juniors and seniors combined. Of that, more than twenty-three percent of them are currently taking courses at State College of Florida, or either on-campus dual enrollment or SUN CO. That's twenty percent of those students. So that goal is working. Now, we've got to take a step back again. Click, please. Dr. Breslin is going to talk to you about our overall data. And then we're going to share with you three strategies that are focused, that's going to help us move our school grade. Dr. Breslin?
Thank you, Dr. Shelley. So you'll see on the PowerPoint, the graph that's represented on the next slide. You'll also see a handout titled School Improvement Plan, SIP 2017-2018. And this handout summarizes our strategic goals listed in our full school improvement plan. If you take a look at the graph, you'll see, although we're extremely pleased with so many of the positive things going on with Booker High School, we do recognize the need for growth and are working towards growth. Looking specifically at the beginning at English Language Arts, not only do we need to improve in the area proficiency, but the maximum amount of growth that we really need to see is within our learning gains. Our bottom quartile did not perform last year, and I think it was because we didn't have our focus in the right spot. And so we've refocused to make sure our bottom quartile sees the gains that need to happen. The same for math. You'll see a major jump in the bottom quartile. And again, we'll talk further in the presentation on how we're going to make that jump and support those students. Additionally, biology, we're looking to increase to where we were two years prior to last year. And US history, we made a nice jump last year, but we want to continue that growth and that success forward. You'll see, overall, we're looking to make a seventy-seven point gain related to school grade for this year. And then the following year, I mean, we look at three years' data, historical data, moving forward to make these numbers and make these goals. And then we look forward. Where do we want to end up? Of course, we want to end up in A. So next year, we're shooting to be a B with a seventy-seven point gain. And then the following year, our plans are to continue to grow and earn that A. Looking at our college and career acceleration numbers, you'll see that's lagged data as well as graduation. And I know you all are aware of that. We will receive a fifty-four percent for the acceleration for this year with the goal of moving up to sixty-seven percent. Those numbers are solid. It is growth in that area, and we're celebrating that growth. Our graduation, we have really closed the gap in our graduation, and we're seeing an increase. We should be at seventy-six percent if our numbers are correct going into the, at the end of 2017, and then moving to eighty percent for the end of 2018. You'll see in our strategic goals, we have recognized that there is an achievement gap, and we have planned to close that gap as well. So next slide, please. And here's how we're going to accomplish that. We have our professional development. We have our positive school culture, which Dr. Shelley will speak to, and standards-based progress monitoring. Next slide, please. Looking at professional development, I know, it was, visible learning was mentioned earlier. We have embraced that as a faculty, and not only looking at professional development with our teachers, but also looking at how we can share this with our students. We are doing a school-wide book study for visible learning for teachers. We also brought in the work of John Sapphire and his work with High Expectations Teaching. Amazing book. We started reading it as an administration team, felt that we needed to share it with the faculty, we needed to share it immediately. We brought some of the key points to faculty members, and we're happy to say that we've had over thirty staff members volunteer to be part of a second book study with High Expectations Teaching. Next slide, please. So as we look at examining teacher clarity and what that means in relation to student clarity, we know that our students need to know what they're learning. We need to know, they also need to know how they're learning it, and how they know when they have learned it, and where they're going next. So all of that folds into the visible learning model. High Expectations Teaching also folds into that piece with the growth mindset. We do this within our snacks and strats, which we hold monthly. And we also have our PLCs, which are monthly, and we also have mini PLCs. So many layers of professional development from sessions led by myself, sessions led by our school leaders, sessions led by department chairs and teachers. We also have a targeted writing instruction program that we've rolled out to really help raise the achievement for our ELA and our progress monitoring tools, which we'll speak to. But all of that is intertwined within professional development. You can't have professional development without those elements present. And Dr. Shelley, I will pass this over to you now.
Thank you, Dr. Breslin. Let's talk about a school culture for a moment. When you walk on Booker High School's campus, you can almost immediately feel a positive school culture. But that's not enough. The reason why I have a student here, because with visible learning, there are three broad areas that we're looking at. And one of them have to do with teacher clarity. And all of this is brand-new, by the way, brand-new as a direct impact of improving our overall school grade. Visible learner teaches us that we need to look at the impact of our students and teachers as well as administration. And then there's another component to deal with our parents. When it comes to our student relationships, they're not moving the needle. In order to move the needle, we need to make sure our students understand the difference between what it means to be a good student and a good learner, and the characteristics that they need to exhibit. So we are explicitly teaching these strategies to our students this year. That's very, very different. So I'm going to ask you to skip the next slide and go to the second one, please. You've heard a lot this morning about growth mindset. And we're looking at growth mindset. The High Expectation Teaching book that was shared earlier, it provides fifty different strategies that we can use to help students to believe in themselves. Because sometimes, they don't believe that smart is actually something that you can get. When we think about growth mindset and what we're doing differently, students' beliefs or perceptions about intelligence and ability affect their cognitive functioning and learning. If they have always been told what they can't do, or they don't understand how to learn, then we can't expect a change. The second part of that, my students, our students, hear every message that I send or we send, whether overt or implied, about their capacity to learn and succeed. So we are intentionally, deliberately focusing on that. Please move to the next slide. In the book that we've read, or we're talking about High Expectation, everything we know about mindset, the positive, well, the growth and fixed mindset, that's there. But the book never gave us the strategies that we need to help children-